Well, I would ask that we open with a moment of silence. Thank you. I recognize Ms. Bridgette Ryan for our pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we approve the agenda, I just want to make something clear. I know some of our regional news outlets have called this a special call meeting or an emergency meeting, and that is not the case. So if we're expecting there to be conversation about our mask, optional mask policy, that's not being discussed tonight. If it has to be discussed another time, it'll be at a later date. It's definitely not on the agenda tonight. That doesn't rule out public comment, but it's not something that's addressed by the board tonight. Okay? I don't know where that information for the news outlets came from, but it's definitely not from us. Thank you. Board members, you've had the opportunity to review the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in second. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Heffter, Superintendent for Honors and Recognitions.
Thank you, Chairman Trump, board members, and welcome to everyone in the audience this evening. We only have one recognition tonight, and I will say that I remember the day this young lady started kindergarten at Bethlehem Elementary School. And it was apparent from the age of five that she was pretty special. And I find her mom and dad to be pretty special, too. Her mother worked for me during the nine years that I served as principal at Bethlehem. And her father has worked in our school system at the high school during that same time. So I just feel blessed to be able to recognize Caroline Wills tonight. But Caroline, will you come forward? I don't need any help tonight, since we only have one. And when I finish recognizing you, I would like for you to tell our board and the audience what you have in store as far as your plans for... Okay? So Caroline Wills placed first in the 12th grade social studies academic test competition at the National Beta Club Convention held June 25th through 28th at Walt Disney World Swan and Dolphin Resort in Orlando, Florida. And I lived vicariously through your group. For all those days, I watched you on Facebook having fun during the times that you weren't competing. Beta Club holds annual state conventions in 18 states, both for senior and junior beta divisions. And winners of these state events compete on a national level. Activities range from academic contests to quiz polls to talent competitions. Conventions allow members to interact, share project ideas, and showcase their academic and leadership abilities. Plus, the conventions are held in exciting locations, giving members the chance to see cities and places they may not ordinarily have the opportunity to experience. Caroline, we are so proud. As I said, you are the daughter of Ed and Marnie Wills. Ed, will you and Marnie come forward also? Please, everybody, join me in congratulating Caroline Wills, the best in the nation as far as social studies academic tests go. Way to go. We'll grab a couple pictures and then we have to be even on the... Here we go. Caroline, come this way. You go.
Close it up.
Let's split the A. There we go. Here we go. And Caroline has a big week ahead of her. We're lucky to get her here tonight because a lot of students have already left for the university. So tell everybody what you have in store.
On Friday, I'm moving to double major in journalism.
And you will be in next.
Wow. Great job.
Thank you and good luck. Good luck, Mom and Dad.
Okay, it's time for a public comment, and we have had someone to sign up. So I'll read the board procedures for public comment. Each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his or her remarks. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted to them, and time may not be relinquished to another speaker. Only one spokesperson will be allowed to speak for a group of individuals wishing to address the board on the same issue. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board chair in the order in which their names appear on the signup sheet. Speakers will address the board from the front of the room and begin their remarks by stating their names. Comments that are deemed obscene, profane, or personal attacks on a board member or a school employee will be cause for the ending of a particular speaker's time as determined by the board chairperson. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the board. The public comment to the board period is not intended to require the board to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member of the board. Discussion between speaker and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers will refrain from discussion of any of the following items, items which are closed session matters, including but not limited to the attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, property acquisition or liquidation, or complaints about specific employees and students in open session. This is in accordance with General Statute 115(c)(321) and the Open Meetings Law, which protects students and employees' records. Speakers will be courteous in their language and their presentation. Okay? And we have Ms. Katie Handsue, if you will.
Good evening. My name is Katie Handsue. I want to once again express my gratitude to our members who voted for parental choice when it comes to masking this upcoming school year. I know a lot of school boards across the state are backtracking in their decision for optional masks, but I hope that this county stands firm in allowing the parents the ability to decide what is best for their children. I'm aware that a mandate from Governor Cooper would override your decision, but at this point, the decision is still yours. The petition that was presented last week had over 800 signatures. Parents in the county have made it clear that we want the ability to choose whether or not we mask our children. I would like to bring to your attention from a recent article published in the Wall Street Journal by Dr. Marty Macari of Johns Hopkins and Dr. Messner, Chief of Pediatric Infectious Diseases at Tufts Children's Hospital. The title of the article is "The Case Against Masks for Children." Both Macari and Messner start by addressing that the evidence to support that masks reduce COVID transmission with children was found with only a single retrospective study and was deemed inconclusive. They also address that masks cause distractions, impede eyesight with children who wear glasses due to fogging, and can cause skin issues. It also leads to increased carbon dioxide in the blood, not to mention that masks can be vectors for pathogens if they become moist and are used for too long. The theory from authorities in many places is that masks do no harm. And while this may be true for short-term use, we have no way of knowing long-term side effects. Dr. Macari states, "The possible psychological harm of widespread masking is an even greater worry. Facial expressions are integral to human connection, particularly for young children who are only learning how to signal fear, confusion, and happiness. Covering a child's face mutes these nonverbal forms of communication and can result in robotic and emotionless interactions, anxiety, and depression. Seeing people speak is a building block of phonetic development. It is especially important for children with disabilities such as hearing impairments. I hope the school board understands that those of us still advocating for parental choice for masks are not careless or selfish people. We are simply doing what we feel is best for our children, and at the end of the day, that is all that matters. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Handsue. Thank you. Okay, board members, you've had the opportunity to review the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All of those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay? And I will say, if you want to exit the meeting now, it's a good time to do it. We'd love to have you here, but it's now we're going into the report section, so whatever you want to do. All right? All right. Let me recognize Ms. Leanne Wisniewicz, Director for Consolidating Human Services, Director for Alexander County, for a COVID update.
Thank you, board, and thank you for having me. I will make the COVID part brief in case you have questions. We are still continuing to see an increase as well as across the U.S. and North Carolina. Actually, the last five days for North Carolina and many of our adjoining states has actually seen that peak and start to come down for the last five days. So Alexander County was a little behind that curve when our numbers started going up. So we're hopeful maybe next week we start seeing that come down. We have not yet, but I'm an optimist to the end, so I am certainly hopeful. I am going to just give you... We keep running numbers, and that comes out on our Facebook page. So if anybody wants to track that and follow it, that's a good place to see that. These are rolling numbers. So every day they change. So for the last 14 days, and this is accurate as of noon today, 212 cases in the last 14 days. A week ago, that was 118, to give you some parameters. So you can still see it's not doubling every week, but it is certainly on the increase. For the last seven days, currently, we're at 102 cases for the last seven days, and that was compared to 80. Our hospitalizations have not really gone up drastically. We have six compared to three and five, but one of those individuals have been in there well over a month. So to give you some parameters, still 88 deaths. And our numbers haven't really changed for vaccination. We're at 36% fully vaccinated and 35% at least one vaccine. I'm hoping that changes soon because we are seeing vaccination numbers increase gradually. All the pharmacies are seeing that, and we are seeing that. We're just trying to educate. I think we're continuing to see college students prepare. We're starting to see high schoolers prepare. And we are seeing those individuals that had had positive COVID cases that wanted to wait till three months, six months, till they didn't have antibodies. So we do still have all vaccines in the county. The Health Department has Moderna and Pfizer as well as the pharmacies. So getting vaccines is not an issue. Now, getting a rapid test is an issue in Alexander County. With the increased numbers, that's pretty much backordered everywhere. I had somebody calling today trying to find it, and I don't know of any in Alexander County right now. Everybody has them ordered, though hopefully they come soon. We're still testing every day, so you can make an appointment at the Health Department if somebody needs tested. And any questions about COVID?
When you say... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
I have a question, and I hope it's not too dumb.
No dumb question, never. If you thought it, somebody else thought it.
Well, just wait. Okay, so now we're hearing about Delta.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there another test that's telling us it's Delta? How do we know it's Delta?
You're not gonna know. That's simple, isn't it? The state is testing for Delta. Prior... So you're not gonna know on a rapid test. You're not gonna know in a doctor's office.
Is there another test for it?
It's the same COVID test, but the lab, like for instance, the Centers for Disease Control or the state lab, a bigger lab will sequence it. They have not been telling public health that. Now, we're supposed to be beginning to be notified next week of the Delta or not. What we have been told is that 94... I can't talk tonight, sorry, y'all. I need caffeine or something. It's been a day. 94% of all the North Carolina cases in July was Delta. Now, that's based on percentages because right now, they're doing about 50% sequencing. So they're basing it on statistics. It's the same test, they're just running it through a different process. So what we are seeing is a lot of ours is Delta. We are seeing some breakthrough from vaccines. But what we're seeing is milder cases. People that have been vaccinated generally aren't as sick. Some don't even hardly realize they have it. It's more, is this allergy, sinus, or is this something else? And when they're tested, they're many times surprised. We do have one that I know of that is hospitalized that was vaccinated. That's... We're being told that's very rare, and that's the only one hospitalized here. Most... All the cases have been mild, but it is Delta. It is a variant, and that's why what we've seen in other countries is that the Delta variant comes really quick and peaks, and then goes back down pretty quick. And that's why we're hoping the U.S. and North Carolina follow similarly to the other countries that saw it first. Thank you. We are very hopeful.
I'd heard several folks comment about trouble testing over the last week. You said you're having trouble getting rapid?
Yes.
Are you still consistent on the send-off?
Yes, oh, yes. And we have as many send-outs as we need. We were only doing it a couple of times a week, and now we went back to drop-through every day. Because we went from two or three tests a day to 30 or 40 now. A lot are because they've been exposed. Many, many are still coming back negative, but, you know, they were around somebody. We're seeing a lot come back from travel. Mexico, Jamaica, all those wonderful countries I'd love to go to. Their vaccine rates are really, really low. So we've seen a lot of people that have traveled. We've seen a lot of Fourth of July parties that then, you know, one person came back positive, and we're testing 20 or 30 people. So the rapids are what the pharmacies have done. Health Department have... We've pretty much done all the send-offs. That way, we kind of trade off the work, you know? If you need a rapid... Now, they do still have all the antibody tests if somebody's wanting just to know if they're still immune from vaccine or disease. More than not, it's disease because what you're gonna see if somebody's had COVID disease and they're still immune and they take the vaccine, their first dose, they're gonna have side effects. They won't the second versus like myself. When I took it, my first one was fine, sore arm, but my second one was rough at 24 hours. It only lasts 12 hours, but you feel really bad for 12 hours. But I'd rather feel bad for 12 hours than have COVID and be on a ventilator, so...
Any idea regarding vaccination for 12-year-old children, the weight?
They have actually requested that, and they're hopeful for October is what I've heard, timeframe-wise. It may come through sooner, but...
Do you know in age groups that that would be?
There... I'm not sure how young that goes down to. I want to say five or six. I mean, it would get our school-aged children. And I know Pfizer is ahead of Moderna, but they're both in trials.
When you say that vaccines have picked back up, but yet that percentage point is still at the same place we were, it's just we've not had enough to change, to move it up.
Every day I look and go, come on! Move! But it's any day now. Because we were only seeing five or 10 a week, and now we're seeing 40 or 50, and so is the pharmacy. We've actually had to order more vaccine. We hadn't done that in a long time, so that's a promising sign. And I do realize people's concerns and fears and, you know, my role, public health, is just educate and let people make an informed decision. You know, there's all kinds of reasons people are fearful. So my goal is to eliminate those myths and the things that really aren't true, and then help people make an informed decision. We're actually doing some trainings in a couple of the industries that are trying to increase their vaccination rates, just so that people do know the facts. Bridgette, that was not a dumb question. Very good one.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you to the Health Department, EMS, all the county staff for the past... The hard work you do all the time, especially the past 16 months. Because I remember you and I sitting in Lenoir at a meeting regarding... Didn't have anything to do with this pandemic, but, you know, you were studying it, and you were in front of it before it was even in the news.
Thank you for that. I have a wonderful public health staff, and I can tell you, it has been a trial. It's been weekends, it's been late nights. And that's the hard part when you're a small county, you have a small staff. But EMS came and helped us. We had retired pharmacists come help us vaccine. I mean, we have... We used Senior Center site to expand where we could be. So the community, I think this is what makes me so proud of Alexander County, the community came together to see that we did all that we could do for our citizens. So I commend them. You know, I couldn't do anything without them, and they... We were like, please, don't come back. We just had a little break to get your kindergarteners vaccinated and back to, you know... COVID kind of took over, and, you know, we do 14 other programs that kind of had to take a backseat. So it was definitely a challenging time. So I'm hopeful this is just a little speed bump, and we'll go back down, and we'll maybe be even more prepared before fall and winter. I worry about flu season because that's gonna be another challenging time. But thank you so much for that. Help me go into the next part.
Yes, I was gonna say, if you'll carry on with the dental clinic update.
I'm gonna actually invite Crystal Adams. Susan Bear may or may not want to come. We'll introduce her if she doesn't in a minute, but Crystal lives in Alexander County and is our CVCC representative, and without her, we would not be presenting you about this grant. So I'm gonna let her take over. She is much more the dental expert than I. But I'll be here for public healthy questions.
Thank you. I need you.
We work goods again.
Me, too. So my name is Crystal Adams, and of course, I do live in Alexander County. I am the department head for the Dental Hygiene Program at the Valley Community College. So let me get my... I did prepare a PowerPoint for you today. Where? I work. An idea given to you, but I don't... Oh, there it is. Actually, okay. You have to have taken it for you. All right. So this process started in August of 2020. I contacted the Alexander County Health Department to work with, to collaborate with the dental hygiene students to apply for a Duke Endowment grant. So this grant is based on school-based programs where we actually go into the schools and provide dental services, so not just screenings but cleanings and so forth. And I'll cover that shortly later throughout the PowerPoint. We were awarded $65,000 just to get ready for this, to do a little bit of research about our county, and also to... The Duke Endowment provided us training on how to implement a school-based program into our county. As I said, it is a collaboration between both organizations, and our goal is to provide these preventative services. We did have a snapshot that the Duke Endowment gave us about our county. It shows all the schools. It also shows the percentage of economically disadvantaged children in each area. And we were very excited about this because after we went through the six months, the Alexander County Health Department was awarded in June 2021 a $400,000 grant for a school-based program. So that means in 2021, they will give us $250,000. In 2022, they'll give us $150,000. So we... Susan and I have worked very closely on this. She is the hygienist, current hygienist at Alexander County Health Department. We decided to go into our middle schools mainly because of logistics. Also, sometimes the middle school students are the ones that are forgotten. So we also felt like all of our elementary schools feed into the middle schools. So we are going to have fun, going to purchase a car, to purchase all the dental supplies, also for staff, so it will pay for Susan's salary and an assistant's salary. So they're providing a lot of things in this grant. After 2020... Or in 2023, we're hoping that the program will be self-sustaining, and we will have dental care for all of our children in Alexander County. So we plan to expand into the elementary schools and the high school. So of course, whenever we first go in, our goal is to provide dental services to children that do not have access to dental care. Now, anyone can be a part of this program. Just the parent has to give permission for them to actually get dental services on campus or in the school system. So our goal is to implement this program in October 2021. You know, we hope with everything going on with COVID, we will be treating students that do not have an existing dental home. But again, if anybody... We're not gonna tell anyone that they cannot participate. Also, this would be patients that's actually going to the Alexander County Health Department Dental Clinic right now. We will schedule students for treatment during their exploratory classes. So we've talked to both principals at East Alexander Middle School, West Alexander Middle School. They feel like there is a need in these school systems, and they have been very supportive on when we would pull these children out. What services are we gonna provide? Dental exams, so the doctor will come in and give the student a dental exam, radiographs, cleanings, fluorides, sealants, and then also we'll offer classroom education. The positive about this program, and there are a lot of programs out there that will come in, they'll do dental cleanings for their school systems, and then they leave. The positive about this program is we are actually gonna provide a dental home for all these students at the Alexander County Health Department. So that way, people that do not have dental care, they're gonna be served or if they need additional treatment provided, that we can provide in the school system. The staff, Susan's gonna play a very big part in order to make this program successful. So she is going to oversee our dental hygiene students. So this is a positive for, one, our students in Alexander County are gonna get dental care. Two, our students at CVCC are gonna get experience working with children. And then, three, the Health Department's gonna be able to charge for those services that our students complete, our dental hygiene students complete. Also, Dr. Curran, which is part of the staff at Alexander County Health Department, will also go in and do exams as needed, and then we will have a dental assistant. Yes, it is, it is. And I'm gonna... Yeah. It's kind of like my remote at home. Okay. And it's just one side. So advantages are parents are not gonna have to get off work and take their children to the dentist. They're gonna give needs, their needs met at school. Also, I guess the only time they would have to get off is if they needed more dental treatment from the Health Department. Also, Alexander County Health Department is going to get services. They're gonna be able to provide these services on an emergency basis or any restorative needs that the student may have. And also, as you know, in this county, we need to increase our dental literacy. And hopefully through the children, and hopefully children will go home and actually educate their parents about dental literacy because there are so many people in our county that go for emergencies only. And, you know, this is very close to my heart because, you know, I didn't get dental treatment until I was 16 years old. And so it would have been nice to be one of those children to be served. So this is very close to my heart, and we're excited, and we look forward to it and self-sustain. Any questions?
The self-sustaining part after three years, is that through Medicaid reimbursement? Or is that through NCCHF? Or what is that?
Yes.
Yes.
We have private dental insurance. We bill everything. We even do sliding fee scale. We don't slide to zero. We slide to 40%, which is... And our price to start with is generally more affordable to begin with. But we also will not not take care of a child. If there's a child in crisis and, you know, they can't pay today, they're gonna get care. So... But we do all that billing to self-sustain. You know? Our dental clinic... Many of you remember when we built that dental clinic over 10 years ago, and it has made such a difference in our community. That was before we had any dentist privately taking Medicaid, and we were transporting those Medicaid children to Greensboro and Charlotte. And many were coming back pretty afraid to go back to the dentist. So that was my biggest thing was, let's make it... Because I'm scared to death of dentists. I am, I'll tell you. You know, I dental care, but, ew. You know, I hear that drill in the background, and ew, I need anxiety pills. I didn't want that. My children aren't fearful at all. You know, I made sure they went to the one... You know, I made sure they went to the ones with the video games in the lobby and, you know, they had, and our kids, they beep off into the clinic, not all, but many come in the health department and they're just thrilled to come. I had a, um, actually our CPR instructor, um, he was like, my kids love to come to dentist and, you know, I mean, that's wonderful, that's what we want, you know? Because they take care of their teeth, they come in, they have a cleaning, they get a token and they get a prize. You know? Some of our kids, that's the first time they get a new toothbrush and toothpaste since they were there the last. I mean, it's, it's very rewarding to see what that program's done. So I feel like this is just an extension to go further to those children that's parents aren't getting off, can't get off, don't have the resources to bring them in. And we've done screenings, but we've never done treatment and care, you know, x-rays to see exactly what they need. Even if they need a lot of work, at least that's one or two visits that the parent doesn't have to get off. And we have worked with, we've talked with all the dentists in town. We're not, there's enough work for all of them. We are not trying to get their clients. Um, and they realize that. Um, you know, if a child has a dental home, we want them to keep that dental home. Um, but we want to meet those unmet needs. So hopefully when we're self-sufficient, um, and, and I think Duke Endowment's really excited because this is the first of its kind with a community college student and a public health program, so, um.
They are really wanting to see this be successful. So they're wanting to hopefully, hopefully replicate this in other parts of the country.
You know, we're a small county, so it's nice to be on the front end of things every now and then.
Can you go back to step back because maybe I was, I think I understood, but if I have a child and I have dental insurance, but the child can be seen at the middle school, you're still gonna be able to do that? That's the part that I was just a little confused on. Can you walk that through just to clarify it?
So as Leanne stated, we're not out here to compete with our doctors. We have a lot of support from the area dentist. So if your child has a current dentist, then we're not gonna say, okay, you have to come into our program. If you choose, just because it's easier for you to let your child get those services while they're at school, you could come into our program and you would come, become a patient of our. So, but, you know, even, some people may say I have a dentist, but they haven't seen that dentist since they were, so really they don't have a dental home. But can you choose, just like you can choose to go from one dentist to another, you can choose to go from your dental office to our dental program?
And you would just be billing?
Insurance.
The same way like, like it would be if I took Suzie to the dentist?
Yes. So, um, Leanne, we've worked, um, closely about, you know, what types of payment and pretty much we're going to be taking everything. Um, we, we felt like, um, even with insurance, we thought we were gonna run into some issues because going through training, um, there are some barriers. You know, we can't pay cash for a child at school, but we have, um, worked through, worked with us through that so that way we can actually allow anybody. So, um, the biggest part I want y'all to understand is gonna be Susan. She's got a lot on her shoulders because, you know, a lot of times you go to a dentist, you get a treatment plan, they say, here is the treatment that you need and you don't really know what the treatment is. So Susan, on the days that CBCC students are not gonna be in the schools or she's not gonna be in the schools, she's gonna be calling these parents and she's gonna be more like case manage, manager over their dental needs. And she's gonna explain to the parents, this is what your child needs. You know, if there's any transportation issues, if there's any issues on the social service side, then she will reach out and help them meet those needs so their child can get in to get help. So that's long answer to your question. Yes, yeah, anyone, anyone can be a part of this program. But our goal is not to go in and compete against our other doc, uh, other doctors and they've been very supportive because there may be a need that our, the dentists at the health department may not be able to meet and we may have to refer out to those providers in our area.
Uh, it's just an exciting innovative program.
We are very, we are very excited. I've, I've been very happy Leanne welcomed me with open arms when I called her with this idea. Um, and then the Duke Endowment, they were like, we've never had this happen, so we really wanna see this work. And so Susan's probably got the biggest part on her shoulders because we're all like, you have to make this successful. But, you know, if we can get in every school system, we can meet a lot of needs because there's a lot of children that don't know that they need to go to the dentist. And there's, you know, people die from abscess teeth, you know? And so that's part of our healthcare.
And if you don't die, you're gonna think you're going to. I've had an abscess too, that is not. Um, and how they'll know to make that choice in the packets for those middle schoolers when their initial paperwork comes home, you know, that aisle you get to fill out, um, will be our information informed. That will be the only time they can sign up, but they will be, they'll have the first information provided then. We'll, we'll do some outreach. Of course, teachers can refer, the school social workers, child that comes in later, you know, train, changes school, moves here, can enroll at any time, but that's how they get the initial information.
It's very exciting. It's, it's, it's interesting watching your clinic on campus and now to see Alexander County benefit from it and our students. It's, it's, it's a win-win for everybody.
We've always went to Alexander County and Susan's always, um, been over our clinic or over our students in the clinic, but we've had some changes, industry's changing as a whole. We've had some legislation changes where she can actually oversee our students without a dentist in the building. So, um, and I would, you know, I feel like more changes are coming. So yes, this is, yeah, thank you right now, really appreciate that call me up and thank you for the support.
And you know, with the clinic, we've had less students that we can serve, but this will give us more students, more opportunities and hopefully they'll stay in our county to work. Susan, you at least have to stand up so they know. Susan Bear is our, um, public health, that takes different credentials to be a public health dental hygiene. So we are very proud of her. Very proud.
And she's a graduate of.
And I say a J's.
Yes. Uh, graduated. Yeah, so, yeah, so I'm very proud of Susan. She's very close to my heart and, you know, we're excited to see this program take off. We know it's gonna, we're gonna go through some hurdles and there's gonna be some things that we have to change, but we're very excited.
Susan's got to work on some muscles because, you know, I'm excited by x-rays in the school. You know, it's, um, and, and that sounds simpler than it really is. That's a lot of permits and processes and, um, but to me, that's exciting, you know, but, um, state-of-the-art programs in Alexander County.
And there's a lot of, we are one of the few counties that do not have these services in our school. So Abba County, Ardeel County, they're all doing this. Um, the biggest force, or the, the important part to me was that our health department did that instead of it's somebody external coming in. So eventually I feel like somebody would have probably came into our county, but I know the services that the dental clinic provides and it's very important that they, you know, get dental care, but they get quality dental care. And that's why we really need to support this program to make sure no one's.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, board members, do we have any committee reports?
We had a foundation meeting last Thursday, the Education Foundation, and we have several events coming up. Um, we have a halftime ceremony for the Sports Hall of Fame members that will be September seventeenth. We recognize them at the, uh, high school football game. And we also have our, uh, golf tournament that is October twenty-third at Rushy Mountain. And we have decided to rename that golf tournament, um, Johnny Bruce Memorial Education Foundation Golf Tournament. He did so much work for that and so it was only fitting that, that we changed the name of it. Uh, we also have our Sports Hall of Fame Ceremony, which is November the twenty-second.
Any other committee reports? Okay, I'll recognize, uh, Dr. Jennifer Hethner for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Trum. This same report is attached to your agenda if you want to follow along. New teacher orientation and our customer service training sessions have been a wonderful way to kick off the new school year this week. I want to thank Dr. Curry for the work she's done with the new teachers and Sharon Mahaffey for scheduling the customer service training and the person that facilitated that was Deborah Dixon-Doss. Opening session is scheduled for next Wednesday, August eighteenth, and it will be done virtually in an effort to keep all staff safe and enable students to return to school on August twenty-third. The last thing we need is for staff to be exposed or contract COVID during that opening session activity. I have also discussed open house plans with all of our principals today and we are going to be offering details to parents and families that will allow us to have that many visitors on campus prior to the start, start of school. An automated call will go to parents. The award of honor ceremony and, uh, reception are scheduled for Sunday, August twenty-ninth, beginning at two-thirty in the auditorium. Deborah has been in touch with Mr. Spry's son, Jeff, and they would like to keep this date unless the governor pr- provides a new executive order prior to August twenty-ninth. Since this is the Board of Education's most prestigious award, I would ask that each of you mark your calendars and make plans to attend. It will be very special and we will be honoring Mr. Aaron Spry for any of those who, uh, that you weren't aware of who would be honored. Staff vaccines are scheduled to be administered at the health department this Friday. Staff members do not need an appointment. Both vaccines, Moderna and Pfizer, are available. Staff members can go anytime between nine and twelve and one and four to receive the vaccination. And just as an FYI to board members, I will be out of the office on Friday. If you have an emergency, I would ask that you call Deborah and I will return your call just as soon as I'm available. I would ask that you not call my cell phone. So, um, do you have any questions?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, this time I'll recognize Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, Chief Financial Officer for, uh, proposed policy revisions.
We have, um, six policies up for second reading tonight and I would like to ask for two of those policies to be approved on second reading. Policy thirty-two thirty, copyright compliance and policy forty fifty, children of military families. Um, with all the activity that's been going on, I'd like to have some more time to get input for the other four policies.
Move to approve second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Okay, we've heard the, uh, recommendation to approve policy numbers thirty-two thirty and forty fifty, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
We have four policies up for first reading tonight in the four thousand series and I will get input on those also and, um, bring them back, um, next month.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And she, she's still up.
Oh, that's right. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Let's, uh, resolution for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, uh, education continuing budget.
Okay, um. Every year we do a continuing resolution until we get a, a budget. Um, I read today where, uh, the state, they're not expecting us to get a state budget until the middle of September, which is going to be sometime before DPI gets a lot, if it does happen, then a lot less and, um, we can present a budget to you. So I asked for approval of this continuing resolution.
Move to approve the continuing resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the continuing resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Now, sorry. I'll teach me to not turn the page in time. Just one quick question. Can you remember a time that we had the budget? By what? Uh, mandated by general statute by that time period? I can't remember.
There may have been a time, but I don't remember.
More than a decade ago.
Yes. Way more.
If you, I guess if you make the rules, you just, uh, everybody else has to go by them, but you don't. It's unreal, unreal. Thank you. At this time, I'll, uh, recognize Mr. John McCurdy. Uh, he's Transportation Director for the Proposed Charter Bus Companies for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Good evening. Uh, in your package you have, you should, uh, have the recommended charter bus list for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This is the same list that you had last year with the exception of Goldsboro Bus Company, they have dropped out. Um, all company's paperwork, buses, employees have been checked by Greg Smith with Eastern Transportation Consultants and have met the requirements, um, to be a vendor for the school system. So I just need your approval on this question.
Maybe approve.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of, um, of approving the proposed charter bus companies for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, please say aye. Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Board members, uh, at this time we'll enter into closed session to discuss personnel for North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three eighteen point eleven A six. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries, thank you.